Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
Hello, everybody. Welcome. It is Wednesday, April 5th, and this is the Ross Valley School Board of Trustees regular meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Our first item, as we always have, is a closed session. So, tonight, we're actually, I'm going to ask that we're gonna, we need to pull two closed-session items for tonight on our closed session. We're pulling the Conference with Real Property Negotiators 199 Portius and the Conference with Real Property Negotiators 110 Shaw Drive. There was inadvertent oversight on the kind of agenda language for the first one, and that the information that we were expecting for 110 Shaw Drive tonight didn't come in time, so we're gonna pull that one as well for the special meeting. But the remaining regular meeting closed-session items will be the anticipated, will be the anticipated, I'm gonna get this correct here, the anticipated litigation with significant exposure according to Government Code 54956.9 subdivision D, 2 or 3, and there are two student IDs associated with that, and the public employee evaluation for the superintendent, and the conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, all employee groups, RBTA, CSEA, confidential classified, confidential management, and certified certification management. So before we move forward on getting public comment on the closed-session items, I wanted to get a sense of how many people are here to speak to, speak on a closed-session item, either in what we're gonna move to is a special meeting for one of those closed-session items or the regular. So, how many people raise your hand are going, wanna speak to anything on a closed-session tonight? Just a couple of people. Great. Okay. So, we will go ahead and take public comment now then on closed items, probably the closed items. So come on up, give us your name, and we will have three minutes for listening to public comment. Rachel, you wanna help us out with the three minutes? We'll do our regular thing. We got three minutes. You'll hear some chimes at two and a half, and then you got thirty more seconds. So, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Pete Santucci back again. Thank you so much for having us. I wanted to talk about labor negotiations. And I'm a teacher in the school district, music teacher, and I also have a child at White Hill in seventh grade. And so, I just wanna say that I really appreciate the board directing the management's negotiation team to try to increase salaries for teachers as much as possible. And it means a lot to us to have that support from the board and working with the administration. I just wanted to report, I work at all the schools, or I work with teachers from all the schools, and so I hear a lot. And I just wanna say that I feel like teachers are feeling angry and unsupported. And I know you guys are doing everything you can, but I feel like there may have to be some real outside-the-box thinking to get teachers' compensation as high as possible. That's realistic. But, man, it's really hard talking to teachers. People are upset and feel like seeing the raises, salary increases that other unions have been able to negotiate in their districts around here the past few years. I'm just really worried that we're gonna lose a lot of teachers. And my son has amazing teachers at White Hill. Incredible. He loves them. He had to miss school last week because he fell into poison oak, and it was so bad that we had to take him to the doctor and get medicine. And he was so upset to miss school because he loves his teachers so much, right? It's so great. So, I just don't wanna lose them. And thank you so much for doing everything you can, but I don't know what you're gonna do, but it may have to be more. I'm really worried. That's what I have to say. Oh, and also ventilation, much better in here now. Thank you for fixing that.
Please, come on up, give us your name, and we'll reset timer for you.
My name is Anna Schnellen. I'm a teacher at Hidden Valley. I have taught in the Ross Valley School District for almost twenty years. Many things have changed since I started here, but I've heard the same budget presentation that explains why our teachers are paid less year after year. We are not doing less of a job than the other teachers in the other districts. In fact, I know that we are some of the hardest-working, most dedicated teachers around. However, it feels like we're valued less, and when you read articles that tell us we make less than the average teacher in Marin, as well as the entire state. Last year, the Marin IJ stated that the average teacher in Ross Valley School District made $79,017, which was the lowest in the county and far below the Marin average of $89,000, and the state average of $85,856. We live in one of the most expensive counties in the state and make less than the state average. At some point, we will not be able to fill open positions. What is the plan then? I had a colleague that worked in RVSD. She left ten years ago to another district in Marin and made $10,000 more at her new school. I was thinking about it, and what if, what happened if I left when she did? That would have been at least $100,000 of extra money, of lost wages. I can think of a lot of things that I could do with that. I could probably start a college fund for my three children, which I haven't been able to deal with our current pay. However, I have stayed. My children attend our schools, and I have been dedicated to this community. However, each time I hear an excuse for why our teachers cannot be paid a living wage or a comparable wage to other districts, I realize that I've dedicated, that although I've dedicated my career to Ross Valley, I am not valued. I am just a number on the graph. I wanna leave you with this. I am a kindergarten teacher, and if a child in my class couldn't read, I would not throw up my arms and say, "Well, it's impossible." I would try every single thing I could do. I would talk to every single person I knew and use every resource available to me to help this child learn. What if when we were told to teach on Zoom or teach hybrid style, we said, "That's impossible. It's never been done before." Then why is it okay to say it is impossible to find a way to pay our teachers? We are teaching growth mindset. Maybe we can find a way to be creative and find a solution rather than just accepting it as impossible like we have since I started here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to come up and speak on a closed-session item? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Appreciate it. We are, we're gonna go ahead and move the other, move those three closed-session items to the, to the end of this meeting, just given the timeframe that we've got those three closed-session items and another one to do. And then we've got kids coming here at seven o'clock. So we will report out as we do at the end of the meeting if there's any decisions on any of the closed-session items, and that will go on the recording for people to hear. So, thank you all very much, and we'll go ahead and recess then into our, sorry. We're gonna go ahead and recess the, recess the regular meeting until seven o'clock and then go into our special meeting closed-session items. So thank you all very much. All right, we're gonna go ahead now. It is 6:12, and it's still Wednesday, April 5th. And this is the Ross Valley School Board of Trustees special meeting, and I'm going to open the special meeting for April 5th at 6:12 PM. I'm looking out into the audience and not seeing anyone here for making public comment on this special meeting, which has one item, and it's a closed-session item. So, what, oh, sorry, sorry. The one item on the closed session for the special meeting is Conference with Real Property Negotiators for, sorry, I'm gonna look this, for 199 Portius. And so we are going to then recess into closed session for the special meeting. All right. Welcome, everyone. We have a, we have a, we've got a little procedure thing before we go into our regular meeting. We are reconvening. It is 7:01, and we're actually, in this moment, reconvening into open session of a special board meeting that we were having with one closed-item agenda, one closed item on the agenda for Wednesday, April 5th, and reconvening at 7:01. There is nothing to report out from our special meeting, and therefore, we can now close the special meeting. So let me get my gavel out here, and we will now officially close that special meeting at 7:01. I'm gonna call it 7:02. Just a reminder that the three regular, on our regular agenda item, the three regular closed-session items on our regular have been moved to the end of the meeting because we have some guests here that we did not wanna make you join us and then have to leave for a closed session and then come back. So, we moved those to the back. So we are now then at 7:02 and thirty seconds, reconvening into our regular meeting, the open part, open session part of our regular meeting. And the first thing that we do in the, in our regular meeting is to put together our, oh, we have our pledge of allegiance first before we do our other procedural stuff. We always start our meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Sometimes before the pledge of allegiance, we take a moment to do a bit of reflection on democracy and civic engagement because that's what we're all here doing as, as a board of trustees, with our school district, and with all of you here. And we talk about the mission, also have a little bit of a mission moment. But I think standing before us is our mission moment, and tonight I'm gonna let that mission moment speak for itself and speak for yourself because the only reason that we are here is because you all are here. That is the purpose. That is why we're here. That is why your teachers are here. That is why all of the staff are here, is to support you in your education. So I'm gonna let your presentation be our mission moment, and I would invite all of us, when we say our pledge of allegiance today, to think about the students who are here tonight to speak and say our pledge of allegiance in honor of them coming and talking to us. So if you will join here in the pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next procedural item before we get started is the adoption of our agenda. And that is how we all have an agreement about what we're gonna talk about tonight. So just like sometimes a teacher in the beginning of the day will talk to all the classes, say, "Okay, here's what we're gonna do today." So you kinda have an idea of what's gonna happen during the day, and everybody's on board with that. That's what we do first as well, is we have an agenda. We let everybody in the public know what that agenda is, and then at the beginning of the meeting, we take a moment to say, is there, is there anything that needs to change on this agenda, or any questions that my colleagues have about the agenda? So we have an opportunity to review it. And if there are no changes or questions or rearranges, then I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Motion? A motion and a second. So we'll vote. Brian?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
All right, we've approved our agenda. We can move forward. The first item. Oh, I'm sorry. We have everyone except for Chris Landals Cobb, who's our other trustee, who's not with us tonight. Just wanted to make sure we recognize that. So, now we will go, move forward into, the first item on our agenda is our student presentation. You wanna tell us about that?
Yeah, just a little bit, and I'll let Ms. Harris take it from there. But this is one of the most exciting times of board meetings ever, is when we have students present. So thank you all so much for being here with us tonight and sharing what you're doing at school, in your classrooms, and at the school. And you are, as Ms. Hamilton said earlier, you are the reason we're all here. So thank you for being in Ross Valley Schools and for being able to share with us this evening all that you are learning and doing to make Wade Thomas the best school that it can be for all of its students and staff and community. And one of the things that we do at every, when we have, we have a spotlight on a school, we do ask the students, when you're introducing yourself, if you could also please introduce who brought you this evening, or who do you have, maybe from your family, your neighbors, your friends, somebody who might be here tonight? And so if you can say, like as an example, "My name's Maya, and I am in third grade, and I have with me tonight are my parents," say their names, "and my little sister so-and-so, and my big brother so-and-so," whoever they might be. If you can do that, and that way we also have a sense of who is in our audience and who supports you every day and helps nurture your growth and supports Wade Thomas School as well. So, is that okay? And if you don't remember, it's all right. We'll do a little reminder. All right. And then you also have some other very important people who brought you here today, and those are who? So, you teacher, and your. So if somebody could also, and we'll let Ms. Harris introduce herself, and then whenever the students are ready to introduce themselves, if you could introduce your teachers, it'd be awesome.
Okay, well, thank you, Superintendent. And that was our first slide, which was saying thank you so much, honorable board, for all your hard work and for inviting us here today, and for all of you that have brought these wonderful friends with us and all of our staff that is here, and those that aren't here that also represent all the work that we do. Here at Wade Thomas, I'm Julie Harris, the principal, and it's just an honor to be here. What we're gonna talk about, oops, I forgot the introductions. Those are, and so with me, I have, we're gonna introduce the student body officers first, and later we're gonna introduce the little buddies. So you say your name, and we practice a special hello for you, and now you introduce who brought you here.
Hi, my name is Ava, and with me I have my parents, Sherry and Kevin, and my little sister, Al.
Bonjour, my name is Wigs, and today I have with me my grandpa, Michael.
Konnichiwa, my name is Mia, and today I have my mom.
Hello, my name is Cadence, and I'm with my dad, Emmanuel.
Sure, my name is Corson, I'm with my mom and dad, Ian and Jamie.
Aloha, my name is Dana, and I'm with my mom and dad, Jamie, Wools, and Jamie.
Hola, my name is Camille, and I'm with my mom.
Awesome. And then, well, why don't we actually just go ahead and do that side too, and then we'll start.
Hi, my name is Zane's League, and I was brought by my parents.
Hi, my name is Mela, I'm with my mom and dad, Mars and Al.
Hi, my name is Cal, I'm here with my dad, Liam Blackwell.
Do I do this?
My mom brought me here.
Hi, my name is Mason, my mom and my dad and my sister brought me here.
Hello, my name is Charlotte, my mom and my dad and my sister brought me here.
Hi, I'm Luna, my dad and my mom and my mother brought me here.
Hi, my name is Billy, my mom brought me here.
Hi, my name is Sophia, my mommy, Leona, brought me here.
We are all really excited to be here today. And what we're gonna do is talk about our whole school-wide equity and inclusive building program that we have that infiltrates all of the areas of our school. So we're gonna talk about our year-long equity focus that aligns with our social-emotional learning, and it's going, we're gonna hit our weekly assemblies and all the work that filters into the classrooms, our student leadership here, and the work that they do to lead with equity and equity lens, our wonderful families and parents that support us in our DEI and our Wade Thomas Parent Association, and then our community partners as well, and how we all work together.
What we believe, each and every child and family is welcome in our community. We are positive and student-centered. We believe in strong home and school partnerships. We see ourselves as ongoing learners and role models. We strive to be respectful, responsible, and learners. Speaking of learners, we wanted to welcome our learners back to school in style.
We were so excited to take our equity and inclusion work to the next level, and we began on the very first day. Before school started, Ms. Harris contacted all the fifth graders and invited us to come to school early on the first day so that we could be the welcoming committee.
We passed out blue lath at every student, let them walk on the blue carpet, and shared tons of mats. We walked new students to their classrooms and high-fived to our older friends. Our goal from the moment that kids and families walked on the campus was for each and every person to feel welcome and conceived. That was the best first day ever.
From the best first day of school to the best back-to-school night, our focus was on equity, connections, and inclusion. This photo on the left shows our back-to-school night icebreaker where the grown-ups on the inner circle had to chat and get to know the grown-ups on the outer circle. Many parents said they met people they hadn't ever talked to before. We make sure that having name tags and a connection activity are part of all of our family events. The photo on the right shows our family and staff that came together on our first DEI meeting. We will share more about that in a few slides, but first we wanna tell you about our big plan on putting all the pieces of building a community together.
Ms. Harris and the staff built this really big year-long plan for building a welcoming community that includes equity. We have monthly themes like inclusivity, identity, community building, gratitude, growth mindset, perspectives, wellness, and community activism. During each month, there's a word of the week that is paired with a social skill. We learn and practice this social skill at the assembly, and then follow up in the classrooms with the sessions, community circles, and activities.
It's like our own school-wide language. The best part is that we always begin each assembly with a mindful moment. And we thought it'd be good to take a mindful moment right now. Why don't we practice a quick moment of mindfulness?
Put your mindful bodies on, take a deep breath in, and out.
Now listen to the sound of the singing bowl. Once you get through the bowl, find your razor. One more deep breath, in and out. Now you are ready to learn more about our weekly assemblies and how we have been interrogating, learning about our cultures and history into our assemblies.
This year, we have been learning about different cultures and holidays all around the world. For example, for Lunar New Year, one of our parents, Jenny Liu, taught us about traditions for Lunar New Year. Some of the traditions for Lunar New Year include cleaning up the whole house to prepare for the New Year, making special food such as mooncakes, and giving red envelopes for good luck. For African-American heritage months, my mom and my dad came and rocked the whole house with their cool presentation about African-American roots and music. My dad played the drums, and we all clapped to the rhythms, and we had so much fun.
Last month, we celebrated the women's history maker family with the humble of our C4C players. We met three outstanding women who are changemakers right now. They shared their own stories and talked about their passions. Alexis Fineman shared her passion for environmental causes. Terrell taught us how her passion for cycling, practicing with her work, everyone invited her to a collection. Chris Dennis Cobb, who taught us that it's important to lead everyone in our community, no matter what your gender, race, and/or ethnicity, or neurodiversity, et cetera. We are a whole human entity, we learn alike, we have each other, we have our heritage and holy celebrations. As student body officers, we not only participate in assemblies, but also run our student council meetings.
Student council is a way for the students at Wade Thomas to get involved in our school. Our goals are to build school-wide community spirit, make sure students feel like they are welcomed and belong here, and to have fun. As a student body officer, I have to be a role model and a leader. We met weekly with Ms. Harris to create an agenda that would keep the representatives on task and community-focused. We have learned how to create Google Doc agendas, run council meetings, and listen to all voices and ideas. In our meetings, we have class reps who will help us make decisions on whole-school spiritings, and we are trying to plan fun and time activities. We take all ideas and run them through our filters. Is it inclusive for everyone? Is it school-wide? Does it improve our community? It's a lot of hard work, and we think that kids are enjoying school more because of our focus on inclusivity and fun. Speaking of fun, we know that our community events put on by the WTPA and our DEI mingles are a lot of fun too. We have had five DEI mingles this year. DEI stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and for us, that means celebrating cultures. The DEI mingles are held every month or every other month, and are centered around the heritage months. Above you, you will see images from our Latinx Heritage Month mingle. At that mingle, we made pepper pescados, tasted yummy papouskas, and the adults participated in a discussion about the math they were. We kids got to play. The other mingle photos are from our Friendsgiving, which was a potluck and a food tasting of Native American indigenous peoples and Filipino foods. Students made Filipino crafts, and the adults listened to a Native American story and talked about the counter-narrative and how we can talk with our children about multiple perspectives. Learning about the counter-narrative is part of what we are doing, doing in our classrooms as well. We want to thank all the parents, parents and guardians who participated in the DEI mingle at the WTPA events that are all about bringing our community together. Huge shout-out for the new event that we had at the beginning of the year called the Community Picnic, where we celebrated cultures from around the world with food, dance, and crafts. Big shout-out to all the parents who organized and attended our mingles. We're not just celebrating cultures and each other here at Wade Thomas. We're also learning about student advocacy for more important issues through our Children for Change classes and Lunchtime Club.
Children for Change is a program where kids get to learn about the community and values. In the classes and the Lunchtime Club, we learn how to advocate and take action to make the community a better place. For example, with the Hoops for Hunger campaign, students taught us to shoot hoops for thirty seconds, and then we had to get our families to donate canned foods for the total number of foods we made. We gathered 286 canned foods. It was super fun. I got to see my friends shoot hoops, and they got to cheer me on. I liked making a difference and partnering with my friends to work on a project just like we do in the classroom. Ms. Annalisa is a great teacher and keeps us all excited to do good things for our community and our world. We are always working on equity and inclusion in our classes. In class, we're learning about different perspectives so we understand all sides of an issue and all of our history. We also talk about social justice and equality, and what it takes for us to treat each other equally and with respect. Also, we have community circles and activities to continue to get to know each other better. We learn about ourselves and our world through books, poetry, writing, and history. Learning about equality is a part of our entire good, including our special.
We are really lucky to have these enrichments like art, music PE, library, mindfulness, et cetera. For example, in art, we learn about different cultures, and we get to learn about artists around the world. We learned about this one artist who went around the world painting small portraits focused on different skin tones. She named all the skin tones. Art opens our eyes to a bigger world. We are learning that working together, like we have to do in this parachute activity, makes for a lot more fun than just playing by yourself. One of our favorite school-wide connection, connecting activities happens in Big Buddies slash Little Buddies.
We have a special program where the older kids get to be given.
We have a special program where the older kids get to meet the younger kids to make a connection and socialize with all ages. We get to help them learn, and the younger get to see what it's like to be as a student. One special project we did together was called Identity Box.
On the outside of the van, you range your traits that people can see without talking to you. On the inside of the van, you bring your cards with traits that are not visible or honest. Let's find out about this project and all our special guests tonight.
So, I'm Jenny Kuvan, and I teach fifth grade. Jamal Odd is my buddy, plus kindergarten teacher. And they may be stacked to the outside. They're going to say everything that's obvious when you see them. And then on the inside are a few things that you would have to get to know them to really know. We really feel fortunate to be able to have a buddy program like this with collaboration that goes across all grade levels. You'll see that their friendships and the partnerships they have is pretty precious. These big buddies really mentor these little guys as friends, partners, collaborative team members, and we'll let them use their talking for what you get to see.
Hi, my name is Carson. I have brown eyes. I'm a ten-year-old. I speak English. I'm a boy. I like hats. I have dirty blonde hair. I'm able-bodied, and I have white skin. Things are in the oven. I have Russian, Ukrainian, Scottish, Irish, German, and French. I have a good sense of humor, and I have asthma.
I am a six-year-old. I have blue eyes, dirty blonde hair. I am able-bodied. I have white skin, and I wear jackets. I love draw. I love to draw. I am a boy, even though sometimes people say I am a girl. When I grow up, I want to be a pilot.
My name is Ava. I have brown eyes. I'm young. I'm a female. I have brown hair. I'm able-bodied. I'm sporty. I speak English, and you might be able to tell that I'm Asian.
I am an older sister. I'm learning ASL, as I did at the beginning. I'm fifty percent Chinese and fifty percent European, and I play the clarinet. And then this is my little buddy, Scarlett.
I have hazel eyes. I have brown hair. I am a girl. I am young. I'm skinny. I have tan skin. I speak English.
I am a big sister. I am Italian and Serbian and a little bit Irish. I want to be a teacher when I grow up.
Hi, my name is Mical. I have blonde hair, blue eyes. I'm able-bodied. I'm a boy. I'm a human, and I'm athletic. I am a world traveler. I've traveled from America all the way to England by my lonesome. I am loving, and I have saved my dog from a car. Okay, and this is my little buddy Mason.
I have peach skin. I am able-bodied. I have brown eyes. Here. I... I have hazel eyes. I'm able-bodied.
I love writing. I want to be a detective when I grow up. I have a stupid dream.
My name is Mila. I have brown eyes, blonde hair. I'm a girl. I have brown skin. I mostly come across as happy. I'm able-bodied. I'm young, and I have straight hair. Now for the inside traits. I am Mexican. I support LGBTQ+ classmates. Most people think I speak Spanish, but I don't really. And now, this is my little buddy, Bubby.
I have hazel eyes. I have blonde hair. I am a kid. My name's Bubby. I have a brother and sister. I broke my leg and arm. And when I grow up, I want to be a geologist.
My name is Waves. I have blue eyes, blonde hair, wavy hair, outgoing, young, secure, white skin, able-bodied, a girl, and you might be able to tell that I have some little ticks. Inside, I have some of my silly fears are elevators. This is kind of silly. I don't really like seesaws, the ocean, and I don't like tiny places, so I'm claustrophobic. I compete in hip-hop, and I'm American, Australian, and Jewish.
I'm Ainsley. I'm in my teens. I'm fashionable. I'm able-bodied. I'm tan. I have brown hair and eyes, and I'm Korean. My name means meadow or a grassy field. I go to Morin Covenant Church on Sundays. I'm Filipino, Spanish, Scottish, and Irish. My name is Sophia.
Hi, my name is Sophia. I am five. I have blue eyes. I wear cute clothes. I have blonde hair. I am five. I love to create fun things. I speak Italian. My favorite animal is a bunny.
Hi, my name is Hannah. And on my bag, it says, "I have blonde hair, hazel eyes. I am a girl. I'm able-bodied, and I have my ears pierced." And for the inside traits, I'm German, Ukrainian, French, and Scottish. I'm also a little sister. Some of my fears are... Actually, I'm not afraid of mosquitoes, so I'm not claustrophobic. I have a skin condition known as eczema, and I'm Christian. And now for my little buddy, Lulu.
My name is Lulu. I have blue eyes. I am able-bodied. I'm a female. I have brown hair. I'm six-year-old, and I have white skin. I like music. I'm afraid of sharks. I sit right, and the jaw is supposed to touch my hand.
And so, what we all wanted to say is, we are Lulu and ourselves. And that's really the work that we do. You can see what joy is for all of us. So we just wanted to share that with you. Anything else? Any questions for Wade Thomas? Thank you so much for being here tonight and bringing Wade Thomas School into our board meeting. So thank you very much, and thank you, teachers, and Ms. Harris for all the hard work that you all do to make these things come to life for the kids and to help them have these rich experiences. Be able to... I remember when my kids are at Wade Thomas, the Buddy Program, they still talk about their buddies, and they're twenty-eight and twenty-five now. And so that definitely is a highlight of an elementary school experience. And just to see the work that you're all doing to show that every child, every student, every person, and whoever they are, inside and out, whether they're hidden or they're visible, whatever the traits are, that every person is valued and valuable, and they're meaningful, and they mean a lot to our community and to bring all of us together. So thank you for everything you're doing to highlight and to learn and achieve all of that. So thank you so much. And now's the time, just in case you thought you were finished, some trustees may have some questions or comments they want to just ask, maybe some clarification questions. And then we always have a part two where we want you to get a picture with all the trustees. So we're going to ask you to come up here in a few. But let's do any questions or clarifications, anything you all want to say.
Carson, you said you were funny. Can you tell us a joke?
You know what I love about this? They all leaned over to help him.
One plus one equals two, I think. Not sure.
It's in the delivery. It's in the heat. People are giggling. It's good job.
He's trying to say one.
I also just wanted to say, it's awesome. It's good. Joy and fun is awesome to bring. And I wanted to say thank you so much as well for sharing what's on your outside and what's on your inside. I wanted to ask if anybody wanted to share anything like, was it ever difficult to share what was on the inside?
It was.
Was it sometimes a little difficult to share? If anybody want to talk about it, sure.
Yeah, I was kind of scared to show my fears because some of them were kind of silly, like seesaws. So that's kind of hard to say that.
I'm also scared of elevators, though, so...
I was scared because there's like a million people.
Want to say a million?
Thousands of people in here.
Coming here to share that's different, sharing it here in your class?
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. Definitely.
Like, I feel like a lot of the stuff on the inside, I keep inside and don't ever share it. I feel like it was also good to share out, so... Oh, that was a so good thing, too.
Well, I also really appreciate what I heard from a lot of you of what you're talking about is that sense of belonging. And part of gaining that sense of belonging is to be vulnerable with each other and to share things that are scary or the things that people don't know about you that you're not quite sure how they're going to hear it and what's going to happen when you share. And hearing you guys tonight is just fantastic because seeing what that creates in your school and with your friends and your buddies and the courage that you have the next time to do that, that's such an important part of that sense of belonging. And I really appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us so that we can share that sense of belonging with you. So thank you so much for extending that belonging into our boardroom. Really appreciate it.
It's by far the best thing about this job, by far, is to watch you guys come in here and show us what you're working on. And I actually seem to learn more from the children when they come in here than I do with the adults. And it also reminds me of why I do this work, and I'm sure for everybody here and your parents and your teachers, that this is why we do the work. And Bowie, I'm pretty interested in the geologist thing. We can talk about that later. That's pretty crazy stuff. There's a lot of good stuff out there. And Waves, I also am afraid of elevators and do not take them.
Definitely want to take the stairs.
Yeah, this is better for you. And Sophia, you do have cute clothes. And I just wanted you guys to say that the things that I learned from your presentation today that I try to learn more about in my life are diversity, equity, and inclusion, too, and how strong those foundations are for your whole life. And you're learning it at an early age, and I'm kind of learning this at an older age. But at the end of the day, it's powerful stuff, and it's very, very important. So, you know, you guys are on a good track. Thanks a lot for making this night great for me.
I'm also afraid of elevators. My mom forces me to take them.
It's all great till you get stuck. It's hard to get stuck in the stairs.
I did. I didn't. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for coming, to your teachers, to your principal. Thank you, guys, because it's such a great thing to see what you guys are actually working on at the schools because we hear about it at a high level. But to hear it from you guys and to hear it in your own words is so much more impactful and so much more important to me. It's a different than hearing somebody read it to you. It's like I'm actually understanding what you guys are doing. And you guys are so impressive. The stuff that you're working on at your student body is the stuff that we have to do here all the time, and you guys have a huge advantage learning it so young. But I'm really most impressed with how you all treated each other. You were so respectful, and you were so helpful to your little buddies, and just how well you've been helped out when you know, you're like, hey, let's kind of see if we can crowdsource a joke right now on the top of our heads. You know, you guys, you're a team. And I like to see that school-wide, and it makes me happy. And I'm proud that you guys showed up. And this is a scary thing to do, to talk in front of all these people. It's a really important thing, and thank you for coming. There you go. All right, you ready to come back around the table? You can be like what it feels like to be a trustee up here. Come on in. Okay, we are back from a short recess. It is seven fifty. It is still Wednesday, April 5th. And this is still the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees' regular meeting. And we are in open session. We just finished up our student presentation from Wade Thomas, which was fantastic. And so, for anybody who didn't get to see that, definitely worth watching or listening to on the recording. Our next agenda item is communications. So, we don't have anything to report out from closed session. We moved our closed session item to the end of our agenda. So we'll do any report out at the end of our agenda for any of the three closed session items that we have at the end. And at this time, we will do public comment regarding items that are not on the opening session agenda. Do we need to do any other procedural things with audio things right now? Oh, yes. So for tonight's meeting, we did have the language people providing the interpretation.
So for tonight's meeting, we did have the language people providing interpreter, but they notified me yesterday that the person had to cancel. So unfortunately, they were not able to get anybody else scheduled for this evening. So we have asked Eric Sable, our Director of Student Services, if he would please do the honors. So is there anybody here this evening who would like Spanish translation or interpretation? No? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for Eric stepping in and being ready to.
Of course, definitely.
Okay, so this is public comment regarding items that are not on the agenda. And if there's anybody here who wants to make a comment to the board, this is always available to everyone at all of our meetings. If you've got something you'd like to bring before the board, I think we do have somebody. Yes, please.
So how does this work?
Come on up here. Come on up. We, with our public comment, you have three minutes.
I sit here?
Yep. Yeah, so give us your name, what you're going to speak about. You'll have three minutes. The microphone is for recording, so it's not like going to amplify you. And then we'll have three minutes. We'll have a timer. And you'll hear a little time at 2 minutes and 30 seconds just to let you do a transition. And thank you so much for coming and let us know what you want to talk about.
Okay, great. Well, hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Melissa Wallstrom. I am a Ross Valley School District parent. I have been for 12 years. I think this is my 12th year. And I also was a PTO Vice President and President at Brookside for over four years. So I've been really active in the community. And I'm here to, I have to put my glasses on, sorry. And I'm here today both as a member of the community as well as representative of the Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships, in particular, the Raising the Bar campaign. I don't know if you are familiar with Raising the Bar, but it has been around since 2017. And why, I'll tell you what it is in a moment. But why it came about is that Marin County has one of the highest rates of excessive alcohol consumption in all 58 counties in California. And this, of course, affects our youth population. And our high school youth, 11th grade, report 44% of 11th grade youth, sorry, report using alcohol or drugs or some sort of substance in the past 30 days. So it's really high. That is double the average of California. So we created Raising the Bar as a campaign to, it's a play on words, to elevate the experience of Marin youth around youth-centered events by changing social norming and having our parent community pay attention to their behaviors and youth-sponsored events such as sports or school, community gatherings, birthday parties. It's not intended to eliminate alcohol consumption for adults. It's just more about modeling enjoyment without substances. We have over 60 organizations that have signed up to be part of Raising the Bar and including almost every school district in Marin County. And so I'm here today to ask that I could maybe come back and be on your agenda to give a full presentation so you can see all the statistics and what our campaign is actually about and what we ask of our participating schools in communication with the parent community and just helping slowly change norms. Because even in the elementary levels, kids are watching our behavior. So we think it's really important. So that's why I'm here, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to an item not on the agenda? Go ahead and come on up and give us your name. And you've got three minutes.
I'm not used to sitting while I talk. Sharon Sager. And I just wanted to, I don't know if you want me to do this now or at the end of the meeting, but I wanted to encourage you to think about not putting properties on your closed session agenda so much because the intent of closed sessions is really to, in relation to properties, I believe from my understanding, is to spend that closed session time when you need to negotiate a specific agreement or a lease or a sale price or things like that. But in terms of transparency with your community, it would be, I think, helpful if that's really what you're intending to be with your community is transparent, is to have conversations in your public meetings and public agenda items about what you're intending for those properties so that you use the closed session to negotiate and talk about things that you would not want to talk about in open session if you're trying to sell to somebody or lease to somebody and you're negotiating the price and you need to talk amongst yourselves. But when they show up on the closed session agendas over and over again and the community doesn't even know what your intentions are with those properties, it's not being transparent. And so I'm just encouraging you to talk about what you're doing with those properties if you're going to start having closed sessions about them. Not the specifics, but are you talking about leasing? Are you talking about selling? Why is that item in the closed session? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to talk about items not on the agenda?
Thank you all. I wasn't intending on speaking tonight, but I just feel like I need to. My name's Gina Davis, and I am a parent. I have four children. It's my golden year. They're all at Hidden Valley this year. I'm also, I'm on the PTO board there. I'm the secretary. I'm also a former teacher. I was a teacher, a full-time teacher before kids in Marin. And now I'm kind of dipping my feet a little bit into it again and doing some substituting for the district. Anyway, I was saddened to find out that RBSD teachers and staff were, are among the lowest paid in the county, especially with the cost of living in Fairfax and San Anselmo area. And I actually am a teacher. I'm not going to name districts, but I was a teacher that taught at a wonderful school in Marin before I had children. And I left that wonderful school because of the cost of living. And I wanted to make about $13,000 more within the county. And it was sad that I had to do that. And I feel very strongly that we're going to lose a lot of teachers if we don't pay them, you know, the cost of living to be able to live here. I feel like teachers have to rely on spouses, which isn't right. And I do, I was at the last board meeting, and I do know that your hands are tied. But I agree with the parent that spoke last week. I don't know her, but I do feel like we need to put our brains together and come up with a solution where everybody's happy. I'm basically on the school site, sometimes up to five days a week, whether I'm volunteering or teaching in the classroom, filling in for people. And they work so hard. And I'm afraid that the morale is going to go down. And I mean, look at these wonderful kids that presented tonight. That's all because of teachers and staff that are at the school that help these children to learn. My question is, and I know you can't answer questions, but I want to know why we have a 30% reserve. I don't know if other districts have that much. Anyway, I just want, you guys have had supportive words, but I want to see more action. Thank you.
All right. Okay. We will then, we can move on to, we've got our, the next item is the correspondence and communication with the board. So we've got all of that from the communication between last week's meeting and this week's meeting uploaded. It's there for all of us to look at, but it's also for anybody in the public who wants to see communications with the board. And we can move then into the presentation action item. And our first item is on a Deer Park update. So. Thank you. And tonight, we have, we're able to finish the board brief. So that was uploaded yesterday evening. I forget, maybe around 5:00-ish, I think, is when I uploaded it. And so one of the things that we do at our board meetings is to give an update from our work that has continued on from our previous board meeting or previous board meeting, which we give an update. So we do them regularly. And tonight, the updates that we're going to just be able to give, and it shows up on the board brief, is around 7/11. So our 7/11 committee is well underway in the district. There's a website, so that's linked in on the board brief. It's to take folks to the webpage, which has also links to the agenda items, because those are Brown Act compliant meetings. So their meetings are also posted on Agenda Online as well as their minutes. And so they're underway with their work. And there will be, as anybody who is a member of our community, parents and guardians or staff, received through email notification regarding input for the work of the 7/11 committee. And then there will be a public meeting that'll be at Wade Thomas on April 17. And then any member of the community who's not a member of our school community. Then it's been, I saw it show up on, can't remember which, probably Instagram is the one that I noticed it on. And then met, saw in, Carrie, thank you, who reflected in an article that I wrote. And then we also have asked the towns of San Anselmo and Fairfax to post it in their newsletters, but they don't always do that, so we don't know if those will get posted there. So trying to, Chris Brown says?
Twitter. And we also did a public notice through Marin IJ.
Through the Marin IJ as well, okay. So there are ways for members of our community to be able to provide input, see what the committee is working on.
And we do have somebody that was looking to see if they could post it just while we're showing it.
Oh, through Nextdoor. Okay, wonderful. All right, so trying to get the information out there far and wide. And so one of the focus of tonight's meeting is Marin County Office of Education's potential involvement with the work that we're doing with Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. So thank you Heidi and Eric for being here this evening. And the district, too, as we all might remember, we've been traveling down a pathway trying to transfer the property directly to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. And then we're so thankful that Marin County Office of Education approached Heidi and then the district. And we have had John attend one of our Deer Park Working Group meetings where we're talking about the potential for what, how they might be able to assist us with that. And so we've been continuing along our pathway. And we're nice to know that we have now an additional potential resource to help support the work we're doing so that we can ensure that the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center remains at the Deer Park property and can be able to thrive long into the future. And so we, as we noted in prior meetings, we have had, since our conversations began last June, our Deer Park Working Group members have had conversations with other public entities to see is there anybody who might be interested in helping to support. And some private entities as well to see if they can support in any way these efforts that we've been traveling down. And so we're really thankful that John Carroll, thank you so much, New County, Marin County Superintendent of Schools, who is here with us this evening to talk about and share some possible parallel paths as we're working toward the solution with the children's center. So I did also talk with Heidi. So if we can let John talk, and then if you would like to also maybe make a few, say a few words, that would be awesome. And then if there's any questions that the Board of Trustees have for John or Heidi or any of us, the members of the Deer Park Working Group, are Heidi, Chris Carson, myself, and our attorney Terry Tout. And then for the children's center, Heidi and Eric, as well as their attorney, Michael Caligresi. And so we're looking at, we didn't schedule a follow-up Deer Park Working Group meeting from our March 6th meeting. So we're looking to try to set one of those up either hopefully this Friday or Monday. And John Carroll was, would also be present at that meeting to help us continue moving forward in our process. So thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you for the invitation. And thanks to a lot of people in this room for the work you've done so far. Just a little brief background about the Marin County Office of Ed. If you're not familiar with it, Marin County has 17 autonomous school districts that are governed by boards and superintendents like this. The Marin County Office does not, well, we run some, we actually run a lot of programs, but we're not a regular school district. We provide support, a lot of fiscal support, some programming support, staff development, a variety of other things for all the districts in Marin County. One of the, I'm recently, I'm a brand-new county superintendent. I've been on the job for, just starting my fourth month. It's easy for me to remember because I just go, it's the fourth month, so it's my fourth month. It started at the beginning of the year. Helps me keep that straight. There are three priorities that I've identified for our office over the next four years and maybe longer if I'm around that long. And we have a lot of priorities, but they're kind of like major, big things that we're putting the spotlight on in sort of reverse order. Career technical education is huge for us, and we're expanding that world and hoping to expand it, not just in terms of offerings, but also down into grade levels as low as fifth grade. That's very important. Number two is we need, I think nationwide, but also countywide, we need to improve our reading instruction. And so science of reading is going to be a major priority for the, at least the next year and probably longer than that. And then lastly, what I want to talk about tonight is early childhood education. We know that early childhood education is one of the key leverage points for increasing equitable outcomes for students, for closing the opportunity and achievement gap. And it's been borne out by the research again and again. If we put resources into early childhood, it's beneficial for the entire system and for all in society. So the county office has a real interest in making sure that we strengthen and in some cases, in this case, I think, help to maintain high-quality early childhood options, especially ones that are state-funded. And that brings us to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. I'm very familiar with, I used to live at 147 Portius. So that was my neighborhood. I know the building really well. I still, I probably walk up there once every two weeks or more. I know the area quite well. My mom's substitute taught there when it was a school back in the 70s, I think, is probably when that was. Anyway, at the county office, we really appreciate the effort that the district has made to try to keep that program in place. And I know it's been hard. There have been challenges along the way. And I, just the level of work that you've done has been really impressive. And I know that we've been sort of like in the background a little bit. So I want to thank the district. I also want to thank the center staff for your hospitality, for letting us tour the facility, getting to know how it's, you know, how the whole thing is working, and then developing relationships and keeping in conversation about what we can do to keep the center in place. I think the conversations that I've been invited to and participated in recently with the district and with staff and with both have been really productive and positive. One thing that has come up, we were looking at as a possible, what I was calling maybe Plan B, if there was a sale that's underway, the 7/11 process wasn't going the way that we thought it might, there might be the option of the Marin County Office of Ed stepping in and being able to buy the property for a dollar, basically, with the intent of, in very short order, being able to extend the lease to the center for a long-term lease to the center. So what that exactly looks like, I don't know. But so far, what we've, with the, in good communication with both landlord and tenant, we've done a pretty thorough legal review with our legal counsel. We've done a construction walkthrough with our construction advisor. We found out a lot of, a lot of details that we need to address, challenges that we can see possibly coming up. And our staff at the Marin County Office of Ed, Ken Wicks is here tonight, Deputy Superintendent, who's been one of the important people on this, as well as Mike Grant, who a lot of you know because of his very conspicuous presence during the pandemic. We've been putting a lot of energy into this. So we believe there's a, and I don't want to elevate hopes to the point where people go, oh, it's a done deal, because it's not. There's still a lot to talk about. But it looks like there's a potential legal pathway to get this done for the county office to take over the property. We also, we did a pretty deep dive into what the construction costs would be to either rebuild, replace, whatever it takes to make it functional. There, I don't want to get too much into the technicalities. Maybe that'll come up a little bit. But there are some things that would make it very expensive for us to take on that property. The liability, construction-wise, is pretty enormous, considerably bigger than what we were initially hearing, you know, at arm's length from conversation. Our construction manager says it's going to be, I don't even want to throw out a number. It's just going to be a lot, and probably a lot more than what you've been hearing lately. One of the major issues there is that if the county office takes over that property, it would have to be Field Act compliant. And for those of you who are aware of the Field Act, you know that that's, that means a lot of money. The other issue is Department of State Architect Emergency Bulletin 4, which says if you reach a certain threshold when remodeling a building, that you have to remodel the whole building and bring it up. that you have to remodel the whole building and bring it all up to current code, which is another potentially huge expense. So what we're doing is, we're staying optimistic. We've hit a few of those challenges. But what, in, in order to, to continue this conversation and potentially make this happen, I need to bring it to the Marin County Board of Education. It's not under my, it's not my decision whether or not it happens. That seven-person board would have to make the final decision. County boards are pretty different than district boards. And in, one of the things they deal with is real estate. So that's, it would be, our staff would support them in making that decision. So they're going to be interested in that. We do have it agendized for our next board meeting, which is the 11th. That's next week. They have discussed it very briefly in closed session, basically just to understand, so they wouldn't surprise them next Tuesday night and then all go, what are you talking about? So they have a very rough idea of what we're going to be discussing. It'll be in-depth a lot more next week. And if we're successful, we'll have a lot of work to do. And hopefully Marin County Office can be a really effective partner in, I think, getting us toward what everybody wants. Having, having met with individuals all along the way and people I've known for years, I have many colleagues at this table, all right, just counted, one, two, three, four, four people I've worked with, various capacities, people I know and trust, I know have great intentions. It's so good to see those faces at the table and people I've just met. So I think we're all heading in the right direction. We have this really precious thing that we do not want to lose. And I'm hoping that we can find a way forward to, to keep, keep that center active in the location it's in and bring it up to a standard that we can all be proud of. And Point 2 is a great example of how Marin County supports early childhood education. So that's kind of the, the big 30,000-foot view. The devil is in the details and it's, right now it looks like a pretty big devil. But that's okay, we'll, we'll keep moving forward. Of course, a couple of things here, it's not my decision, it's not Marcy's decision. Two boards would have to come to an agreement on whether or not they, they want to go down that road. But this is to start that conversation.
Thank you. What we normally do is, you know, have a presentation. And then if there are any, you know, just clarification, questions, and then, and then maybe Heidi, if you wanted to, I know, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about, because I know we've all been in conversation before. So if you wanted to just say anything.
Do that now?
Sure.
Before you.
Sure.
You want to sit up there or?
Sure, come on up and just.
For the sake of it being there.
Yeah, just let us know kind of your perspective.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that my, our perspective echoes what, what John already said and what you've presented and what's in the board brief. I did write a little bit. I think that it's important that we continue to stay on these two parallel paths. And to just bring everyone up to date, Fairfax San Onofre Children's Centers has, is celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. And I was looking at some of our historical documents. And the first meeting about the idea about a childcare program like this was held in 1969 at Manor School, which I found interesting. So it, you know, it goes way back in our community here in Ross Valley and in Marin County. And looking a little bit more, I found a quote from former county superintendent Mary Jane Burke. She wrote something for our 25th anniversary. And she said, "It's been a place of nurturing and safety for literally thousands of children over the years." And, you know, we're a legacy nonprofit in our beautiful county of Marin, of Marin, that I think we can all agree. And we're really grateful for the efforts of Marin County Office of Ed and Ross Valley School District. It's been a hard road for all of us. I think we can all agree with that. And I just want to echo what John said around that this, you know, is an investment in, you know, early childhood education is an investment in our community. It's not, I believe that it's not a giveaway with what the work that the district's doing. We're not, it's not a gift that you're giving a private agency. It's really an economic investment in our community. You know, there's, John referred to it. There's so much research out there about the benefit, the payoff, not just the benefits of like the social justice or the, or the equity element of it, but the economics of it, that you, that we can invest now and the payoff, you know, that we can all do together and the payoff that our whole community gets and the economic payoff about people, you know, coming up regardless of where they came from and their families and being able to be, contribute to the community. And instead of, you know, our federal government, and I'm just going to be on my soapbox just for one thing, instead of spending $35,000 a year on people in prison, we could be spending a lot less if we, as a community, can invest in early childhood education. And I think this is a really good example of that. And if we can ask people to just really think, try, consider thinking about it in that way, that it's not a gift that is being given to a private place, that, that the board has the opportunity to invest in early childhood education. It's really an investment. And so I appreciate everything. I'm hopeful, you know, I know it's just another idea. But I think we all appreciate that we're on, we have another path to look at. And I, I just want to thank everyone for considering that and hoping that we can just work together on it and get to the place we all want to be. So thanks so much.
So if there's any kind of technical clarification questions we need to do that, otherwise we'll go and have public comment and then we can bring it back for any other kind of discussion. There's no decisions obviously tonight, so this is really the information and discussion item. Not seeing any, any clarification. So we'll go ahead and see if there's anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment on this agenda item. Okay, come on up.
We'll do our three minutes. Sharon Sager again. And I just want to bring a little historical context, I think I was at that celebration 25 years ago, to the fact that boards before you have made a large commitment to having this program in place by allowing it to occupy one of our school sites for so many years because they felt that it was important to have that program there to support our community. You know, now what we didn't do as a district was invest in the property. And at the time when we were talking about opening schools, that was one of my compelling reasons for turning that into a school was that was the only way we were going to be able to invest as a school community in improving those buildings was to open it as a school. So, you know, the district has not had a lot of extra money in past years to be able to say we can spend X so much money on our closed school sites. The money was important to be spending on our open school sites. But things have changed a little bit. Now, I recognize that there are other things going on today that put additional financial pressures on the schools. But the one thing we can do is continue to make that commitment to supporting this program in our community, and I hope that you find a way to do that. And I hope that you start moving away from your parts on your agenda that talk about evaluating, you know, how many kids are coming to your schools and stuff. That's not what this is about for our community. This is about providing a program that not only supports the kids, but supports our workers in the community to work here. And so I hope that you don't talk about what exactly, what number of kids is attending today or tomorrow, but how it supports us overall as a community in serving these kids. But regardless of where they maybe go to elementary school, because I think that's probably where the biggest variable is. Most often you're getting them all at middle school. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And then the other, there was one other thing I was going to say, I'm going to forget it. But anyway, I, I hope that you continue to, also the, the main thing, and I appreciate the county trying to work on this, but bringing the facilities up to Field Act is a challenge. It really is going to be a challenge and where the money would come to do that. I think ideally that would be the greatest solution. But keep in mind that, you know, if it's a private sale, then it doesn't have to be Field Act compliant in order for them to operate the program there. And that I still hope you'll find a way to retain the property for future possible use for the district if that should ever happen. Thank you.
Any, any other? All right, so then we'll just bring it back for any other, any other board comments. Again, this is, I really want to thank you for coming and kind of bringing this forward. Especially, you know, we've talked to a lot of other community agencies and I really feel like, you know, I think from what we've heard, you know, what we heard from Heidi and really echo that, you know, we all have a part to play in this, given the community nature of it. And so hearing the involvement that Marin County Office of Education has in early childhood education is really helpful information. And I think, you know, the, the three of our agencies working together, you know, and the idea of it being, maybe there's other agencies that can also come into play because it really is going to be a whole of, it, it would be great if at the end we are sitting around and celebrating many agencies all coming together and taking a whole of community approach to finding a cooperative solution for the entire community so that we're all playing a role. And I really think, thank you for coming forward and kind of taking that first step to.
It's kind of, it's an exciting moment. I think there's some, I'm hopefully not too optimistic, but there's some real potential. And I think a, a vision of, of that site being a modernized, functional, you know, complete childcare center, you know, better than it's ever been, you know, with a, with a great existing program in place is, I think we can, you know, kind of see that as the moonshot, look forward to that. Hopefully, we're going to, I, I think we're probably, if, if this goes forward, we're going to need to do some pretty creative things financially. But I think there, it sounds like there might be some interest in the philanthropic world. Perhaps the Board of Supervisors would want to get involved if there's some intimations from one of the supervisors, that that might be the case. And then I think there's, as I was mentioning outside and all the way before the meeting, there's so much will around this. And it's not about the adults and like what the Field Act and costs. It's about, there's a certain number of students there and it could be more someday who really need this and it's a benefit to them and to the, to our whole world to make sure that they get it. So, yeah, it feels like, you know, we're this really great moral imperative and if the adults can get out of the way, we'll get there.
I'd just like to say that, you know, thank you, but this, I always knew it was going to take a wee. It was going to, it wasn't, it wasn't going to be, you know, there, I, I have never met anybody who said that this wasn't a great program. I mean, I went over there and took the tour, it's a great program. It serves children. And, and when we all signed up for these roles, we signed up to help children, not just our children, but all children in essence. And, but it's, it was, I just am surprised that nobody else has jumped in yet like you to just dig in and say, this is an important program. How do we, not, not us, how do we solve this? And, and, you know, this has been out there. I mean, we've been putting this out there to a lot of, a lot of different people, a lot of different organizations to say, hey, why, why, so, and they didn't pick it up. For some reason they're not, I don't know the reason why, but it's just nice, it's nice to see that it's getting the attention and that people aren't paying attention to see how, how to solve a big issue. So thank you for, you know, bringing it to daylight that, you know, it is important and we have to try to find a solution. So grateful for you.
And appreciate also the, the capacity, you know, the real estate capacity that you all have. You had mentioned kind of going out and doing a site visit and having some additional staff look at it. And, you know, the ability to kind of look at a multiple different ways of stitching together various kinds of possible funding from various places that we might not as our board have access to. So again, the more, the more contributors and alignment that we have, it just creates that quilt of, so the, the whole quilt that's going to need to be there for that solution. Yeah, so I think that's, appreciate it. And we'll look forward to continuing conversations at our Deer Park Working Group and welcoming you into.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to going to the next working group meeting, which I think we're setting up pretty soon.
I'm trying to do for Friday or Monday.
Right, all right.
Yeah, so we can keep it, as you say, kind of keep us all moving forward, which would be great. I don't know if there's any other.
Thanks for not asking me specific questions.
Oh, I kind of heard you.
Twenty is like 30,000 feet for sure.
Yeah.
That's where we are in the process.
And appreciate you moving this forward and bringing it with your, bringing it up to your board. Because I know that you understand the timely nature of this and that we, you know, we're moving down two paths. We still have our 7-Eleven Committee. So also appreciate your understanding of that and bringing it before your board with as, with as much information as you had now to, to start the conversation with.
And thanks Heidi and Eric for, like, I mean, really rolling out the, well, I wouldn't call it a red carpet, but whatever carpet you got there.
Redwood, the redwood carpet.
I think we've had two off, there's one I didn't even know about, I had two staff members, I guess, who, who already came through and really let us see the whole thing. And our construction manager was out there with his clipboard and measuring tape and whatnot and like really very helpful and like welcoming, so appreciate that. I'm going to see what we might be getting into.
That's great.
Good. Thanks Ken for coming out.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Yeah, I think we're going to need a quick restroom break. Okay, we are back from a short recess on item F1, Deer Park Update, and moving on to item F2, which is the recommended adoption of Resolution 132223 in recognition of Staff Appreciation Week coming up here, May 1st through the 5th.
All right, and this is a time that we get to acknowledge all of our employees. And I'm going to let Ms. Julia Walcott, our Director of Curriculum Administration, with some HR responsibilities to do the honors on this one this evening.
Yeah, well, every year the Board of Trustees designates a week in May as Ross Valley School District's Staff Appreciation Week. And that is to commemorate, acknowledge, recognize and appreciate the ongoing contributions of all of our staff on behalf of our students. And we are all tremendously appreciative. And this week we will be celebrating all of our staff, the week of May 1st through May 5th this year. And staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution that is attached to this item.
All right, is there any, any questions or discussion? I'm looking out in the audience and we don't have anyone here who wants to speak on this item. So we don't have any public comment. But other than wholehearted support on my side for adopting the resolution and really like that we have a moment to appreciate everybody every year so that we make a point of doing that, appreciating all of our staff. Because that's why we're all here, as we said, with kids. That is why you are all here and why we so much appreciate and the families appreciate all of the staff.
Only thing I have to say is that I was really happy this is one of those documents I have to sign as board clerk. Okay, I absolutely agree with everything that's on this resolution. So that's my only comment.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
A second. With enthusiasm.
Second with enthusiasm. Would you like to third?
With more enthusiasm.
I'll see your enthusiasm and raise you extra enthusiasm. All right, we have a motion and a second. Rachel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Shelley.
Aye.
So moved. Bonk, thank you for bringing that forward and for us to be able to do that. Wonderful. Our next item is recommended appointment of Ms. Amanda Wagner as Principal of Brookside School. Tell us a little bit about that.
I would, we went through a very robust process and I'm really thankful for Julia Walcott. One of her roles and responsibilities in the world of HR, and since she has taken that on, is the hiring and selection process. And so when I vacated my old position to become superintendent, as I always say, that I like to leave the place better than I found it. And I also am wanting to be sure that anything that I had in place in HR land is built upon and enhanced and rejuvenated, reinvigorated and just meets all of the district priorities and that we are absolutely bringing the best staff and the most diverse, if we can, employees into our school district. And with what Julia has done in the hiring and selection process has just met exactly what I was looking for, is to somebody to improve upon what we had in place before. And so thank you, Julia, for incorporating our equity questions and looking at more places where we can advertise for applicants to our positions in the recruitment area of that, as well as taking all of the input that we gathered from our students, this time we included students at the Brookside School, little guys from kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade, and our parents, guardians, and of course, our classified and certified Brookside employees, to give input as to what they were looking for, what they are looking for in our next principal. And Julia was able to synthesize that information and be able to then ask questions and develop tasks that would help to bring out the best in each of the candidates to be able to show how they would be the next fit for our Ross Valley Schools. We held three interviews. And then I had a separate interview with, at that point, who was our top candidate, Amanda Wagner. And as you might all remember, Amanda was formerly the teacher and one of our NTSS instructional partners. Teacher at White Hill, taught history, sixth, seventh and eighth grades and, and English. Actually, when she was in sixth grade four, so English and history. And unfortunately, we didn't have a position at the point where she was looking last school year. And she ended up going to Nevada, Udonahoe. And she started out at Hamilton School, which is a K eight school. And within two months of being at that school, another school in that district needed her more. And so they pulled her off to go to Santa Zay Middle, which is where she is finishing out this school year as Assistant Principal. And so really thrilled that Amanda wants to return to our school district and that she finds that our school district is her home with the same values and the same efforts in ensuring that all children, we break down the barriers to whatever they might have in their learning to be fully successful. And so looking forward to, I did a very, I think, detailed background here, so I know you have all have read that. But I am so looking forward to Amanda returning upon your approval. And so with that, wonder, do you have any questions?
Don't know, that was very thorough information. I mean, really appreciate all of the thorough background and staff information on our agendas. It's very helpful for us when we come into the meetings because it answers a lot of our questions. So, I really appreciate all of that content.
One of my kids had her as a teacher, so I was sad when she left our district. So I was really happy to hear her name pop up for this position.
That's great, thank you.
And I know my kindergartner at Brookside is gonna be really excited as well since she was on the selection committee.
Oh, yes she was. Oh, I forgot everyone was there. Yes, and so remember you told me that she said, Dad, guess what? I get to select the next principal.
I can say what'd be, you know, that, well, we'll have to take action on it. But like, as a, as a welcoming thing, like some, some of the quotes from the kids in the interview process, like a book, a welcome book of here's some of the quotes of the kids who helped out in the interview process would be, you know, somebody coming into the school would be pretty cool.
If you do approve Amanda's hiring this evening for Brookside Principal beginning July one, two thousand twenty-three, then the next steps would be, I would put something, notice out for the staff as well as the Brookside community. And then Judith and Amanda and I will start to plan the meet and greets. So we have, are talking about one, Judith and I, around the students. And then another one, of course, for the staff and looking at the best time of the day for that. And then also an opportunity for parents, guardians, because not a lot of parents and guardians can get away during the day, we'll probably do what we did for the Wade Thomason White Hill Principals is to schedule a Zoom opportunity for a meet and greet. And then of course, you know, August is gonna be here before we all know it. And so therefore, everybody would have a chance to get to meet her in person. And Judith is happy to do transition activities and meetings with Amanda to help get her up to speed so that when Judith leaves us, which will be a sad day, to move to her closer to her family, then we know that Brookside will be in excellent hands.
Appreciate the timing of the two to be able to do that and how that transition with the parents who are still here and staff and everything. Without any public comment and with what I'm hearing is grand support. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Ms. Amanda Wagner as Principal of Brookside School beginning the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Rachel.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
And Shelley, aye. Wonderful, looking forward to seeing her on.
Thank you very much.
And Staff Appreciation Week.
Yeah, wait till, text her as soon as the meeting's over.
Wonderful. So our next item is approval of a new certified job description, the English Language Development and Intervention Specialist.
Alright, and Julia Walcott, Director of Curriculum Instruction.
Ah, so this is a, a new job description, but it's a combination of two current job descriptions. There are two current jobs that we have. One is supporting our multilingual learners and the other is supporting students who need a little bit more of support with academics and are getting that tier two support. And currently, at one of our sites, we have a teacher who holds both roles. But as an example, she holds a point three EL and a point two intervention, but she has more students who are in intervention and have need than she does in EL. And it's really difficult to balance the time and the FTE. And so the flexibility of being able to determine how you put groups together and also understanding there's a lot of crossover. Sometimes a student who is developing in, in their English language acquisition, exactly what they need is the same thing that kids who are, you know, struggling maybe with academic vocabulary are needing. And so it's really good for them to all be in a group together. It also ensures that at every site, the support teacher will be able to be there a minimum of three days a week. And there is so much research that lets us know that three, three times a week is kind of the minimum for, for students to make progress. And so really, really, that's mainly it, is really providing that flexibility. And then the one other thing is that at some of our sites, because it's been two different people holding the roles, that the FTE that they have is such a small amount of FTE that they aren't able to really fully integrate into the campus. And these teachers, teachers of our multilingual kits and teachers that are supporting academics have become really our MTSS multi-tiered system of supports team for the district. We have monthly meetings and we really want them to be able to take that, that on even more. And I think with more time on our campuses, that will be just that much more possible. So we are recommending approval of this job description.
Really helpful explanation. I know it's a new job description, but that idea of bringing it together, I think that's a really creative way of approaching it and makes a lot of sense in terms of that it, especially with our multi-tiered systems of support approach, that it really all falls in that tier two element and that the idea of having all, having all of the tier two supports of different kinds put together makes a lot of sense to me, I think. And I like also the idea of having that, bringing integration of multilingual learners in just a support system, so it's not a call out, if you will, and it's not so specific. It's whatever the student needs, whether it because they're multilingual or because, you know, there's a lot of things that happen when because of that. So I, that just seems like it makes a lot of sense. Appreciate the thinking on that. And we don't have anybody in the audience to make any, unless, no, nobody in the audience to make a, a comment on that. Any other thoughts? Nope, alright. So I, does anybody want to make a motion?
I can make a motion that we approve the job description for English Language Development and Intervention Specialist.
Great. I'll go ahead and second it. I don't get to do that, yeah. Uh, Rachel.
Aye.
Shelley, aye. Daniel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Awesome. Continue, move forward with implementation. Our next item then is on recommended approval of completion of informed consent with the Franz Law Group to confirm participation in connection with multi-district claims against Juul Corporation and manufacturers of electric cigarettes.
Alright, and with this, the former superintendent, Rick Bagley, as well as the board that was in place in the nineteen twenty school year, were the ones to initiate the engagement with the Franz Law Group in this litigation.
You mean the two thousand nineteen twenty, not the, you said the nineteen twenty.
Oh, not that, the two thousand nineteen.
No, the law.
This has been a long time settling, man. Yeah, so two thousand nineteen twenty school year, so entered into that litigation. And there are over a thousand school districts and entities who have embarked on this litigation as well. So now what we have learned is that the Franz Law Group has reached a settlement agreement with Juul and its other entity, A tree, I forget the name of it. Anyway, and so we're at the point now where we're, for us to be able to continue to participate and potentially get some monetary part of the settlement, we need to have you all take action to approve continuing in this, in the settlement. And then I need to then let them all know. And then once the funding becomes available in the fall, then we will be getting our portion. Now, we don't know how much that will be with so many entities involved. And once, so there was no impact on the district to participate in this litigation, no cost to the district. So any amount that is reached or comes out through the settlement, there will be the attorney fees and other costs that are removed, taken out prior to what we get. But what our district will use the money for, and especially since we have learned that we were not awarded a continuation of the TOPE grant moving forward. So thank you, Eric, for that attempt to get that. But when that ends, it'll help us to continue the education that we do in our schools around tobacco use and nicotine and vaping dangers. So with that, any questions?
That was gonna be my question, it's how are we gonna use the money, but that, perfect.
Help to support, yep.
Offset, but since we didn't have that.
And it may not be much, you know, we don't know at all. But it will be something that we'll be, we will be able to be thankful for and utilize in whatever way we can or whatever the amount is.
When something like this gets settled, is there a press thing that goes out about it and our name is listed? Or where does that, do you know?
I do not know because I haven't done. All I knew was that when, in nineteen, I almost did it again, the two thousand nineteen twenty school year when this was coming forward, that's the first time I ever heard of our district participating, yeah, being involved. So we will find out.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, alright. And again, no public comment out there on this agenda item? Any other question or discussion on this? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Alright, I will make a motion that we approve completion of informed consent with the Franz Law Group to confirm participation in connection with multi-district claims against Juul Corporation and manufacturers of electronic cigarettes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Rachel.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Shelley, aye, so moved. So now we have a similar but different item. It's also a recommendation to approve the contingency agreement with the Franz Law Group to provide legal services in connection with multi-district claims. This time against Facebook, TikTok, Snap, I said Snapchat, I'm assuming, and YouTube. So it sounds like a similar concept?
Yes, exactly. And so going back to the nineteen twenty school year, so the board does need to approve entering into this type of litigation. And the Franz Law Group again is leading the way on this. And so if we are going to participate, I need to be able to put in notice of that by April fourteenth. And so with the board meeting tonight, so if there's any questions, again, I tried to put a lot of information in here to help understand. But what we do know, what we can say for what we experience in our own schools around social media and its harms that it can cause on children, we see the impact. Now, there was a survey that was done by a group that asked children directly, what do you see as the harms and or the supports of it? And while the responses to the survey did talk about the same harms that we see here identified in this potential suit, is the benefits are that they are able to do direct messaging. So there are benefits that children see that they can direct message their friends. But things like the ability to find your friends through location is harmful to, to them as children. I can speak just from my own children's experience growing up in that time and world of, they would see that they might be excluded. Whereas when I was growing up, we had no idea what other people were doing. We didn't know we were excluded, if we were. And so there are harms. And so we would, again, any funding received as the result of a lawsuit settlement, we would then put towards, again, continuing the efforts that we do to help kids understand and through our school council and social workers to help them be able to mitigate the impact of social media on their lives.
Should I say something?
Mm-hmm, no. Yes, of course. Yeah.
Cautious not to interrupt.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement in, in theory and some of this stuff, but I don't know, I don't know. You know, I, I'm cautious, I don't, I don't like suing people or getting involved in things like that. I can see how we could benefit. I could certainly put my child's experiences into something that says, yeah, that could have harmed them. But then I also take a stand to say, hey, you know what? We opted for those things as parents to let our kids do those things, right? So I want to be able to bear some responsibility for allowing my children to have a phone, to allow my children to be living in this world that, where these type of things happen. And I just, I feel, I feel that it's probably, it's probably beneficial to our district. And I know there is harm. I mean, what you're talking about is real, but I also like to accept personal responsibility as a parent. And I like to, I like people to, you know, if you know you're gonna, you're gonna mess around, you're gonna find out. And I think that we all have to take some of these things into our own responsibility. And I, but I do know, like, for example, the Juul thing was interesting because, you know, they're direct market to children. And you can, I, I found the correlation, wow, bubble gum flavored cigarette kind of thing. Or it's not that hard for you to make that leap. But as a parent, I allow my children to have these phones and I allow my, my children to have these apps. And I buy into this. So I, I'm not saying I, I wouldn't agree, you know, because, but I'm just not as informed on to the, the, I feel kind of responsible for my own child and I feel responsible for participating. And I don't like to necessarily blame others for what I choose to participate in. Not saying I disagree with it, I, I'm just not as informed. I mean, I read it, there's a lot there and I, you know, certainly what you said, yeah, you can see where your friends are, you know, and you're not with them, that can, that can cause harm. But, you know, you can also see where your friends are when you want to go find them. So it's like, it's your advantage to get involved when it suits you. And then it's, it's a disadvantage if you're feeling you're left out. But I just kind of feel like I'm somewhat, I'm somewhat responsible for that personally.
I mean, in, in my opinion, I think it's a both and, not an either or. I think as with so many of the things that I think we, as a public body, have conversations with, there's both the individual parent responsibility for everything from social media to educate, I mean, to learning and education to, I mean, and there's a societal, public responsibility for it as well. So it's kind of a both and perspective that I think we can hold or that I personally have is that it doesn't, taking collective public action doesn't absolve the individual of also holding individual responsibility. And it's not all on the shoulders of the individual to be wholly responsible because I do believe there's also collective public action.
And perhaps this lawsuit just moves this forward to continue the conversation around internet safety, you know, interacting with others that you don't know who they are and you don't know their intent. So if this pushes the companies to put better barriers in place around child safety and who are you communicating with? I mean, even when we were during COVID, you know, the, the first graders were chatting back and forth. And I remember the teacher saying, whoa, that's inappropriate language. And really calling out the student because that's what she would have done in the classroom. She was doing that over Zoom when we brought it to her attention that, you know, this was online bullying. And so it was just fascinating that, yeah, when you give everybody these tools, it's not always, great things happen, right? And so if it, this just brings it more to light and, you know, puts a little bit more pressures on the company to have some stronger controls, like you can't buy cigarettes until you're eighteen. That's a control. We know that, doesn't always happen, but at least there's some controls in place.
And it also raises the conversation often, lots of.
It's important for parents to know that, hey, YouTube for kids is really not, that's always the best thing for your kid. And so, and a lot of parents don't know that, they're just here.
Another thing that I thought about in reading this presentation too is there have been costs associated with this too, right? So it's like, we do, we do as a school district, I'm sure, have to run physical or, you know, there are costs involved with counseling and children. And, you know, my kids personally went through some issues with this type of stuff. And so, so there's an impact there and that, and, and so. And that, and, and so from that perspective, like, I would probably move this forward on that basis alone. It's that you can't just put all this stuff out there and expect the, you know, the, by, we didn't mean to, yeah, but you did. And this was a, this is a real cost that we have to bear because of what you profited on. So, I mean, from that perspective, I, I would probably, yes.
I think it's more than just that impact as well. I mean, we saw the TikTok challenges where, like, they were destroying school bathrooms.
Yes.
And I remember we had to.
We had to do a cost.
We had to do a cost thing about that. So it, you know, there, there are financial impacts as well. But I, for me personally, I think this issue, the mental health thing would be more important to me. Um, I do like Daniel's, uh, that it does bring up the conversation wi, in a wider scale. And it does kind of force these tech companies to look at their policies and perhaps change them in a way that's more beneficial to these kids. Because their brains are not developed and they're not ready for this information. And it's so easy for them to get it. And they're so adept on these, these technical things nowadays. It, they're, it's so easy for them to get around things. And getting on, you know, YouTube or Facebook, you don't know what they're gonna be exposed to. And if they don't have guardrails, they may not have the ability yet to make good decisions for themselves. And so with that, I think that some of this money, I wouldn't necessarily want just for education. I would think that maybe mental health to address the impacts that have already been, you know, felt, it might be just as important for that money. Because the kids this age may not be able to absorb the information when you're trying to tell them, hey, this isn't good for you. But hopefully, like, the combination of having these tech companies have to change the way they're allowing kids on there and interacting with the products, as well as having a mental health support.
So it's a prevention and inter, prevention and mitigation after the fact of both of that for the money.
So I think I would be on board as long as we can make sure that we don't just pigeonhole this money for that one purpose. Because theoretically, it might be very little or it could be significant. I don't know, but.
It may be able to very well be used, um, to hire more counselors.
Yeah.
And that, we just don't know.
That to me would be worth it because I do, I do think that there is, there is a financial and emotional and mental cost that we're not seeing, but is there.
Super interesting. Good discussion. I make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Alright, wonderful. Thank you for bringing that to us. Okay, we are now into consent. We have a number of consent items. I'm not seeing anyone in the audience who wants to say anything, uh, no public comment on consent. Is there any, um, board member who has anything to say about the consent? Or any questions or anything before we go towards a, a full consent item motion? No questions?
I'll move consent.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion and a second. Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Daniel, aye.
Yes, thank you. I was waiting for you to finish. Daniel, aye. Okay, consent, so moved. Thank you. Um, alright, on to board business, committee updates, reports from trustees. If we all remember from our, uh, couple of meetings ago, we, this is where we kind of, we consolidated, um, board, what was it we got? Board update, board announcements?
Along with?
Along with board updates. So now this is the time. So it's just whatever you wanna talk about. So we're putting committee updates as well as any other kind of announcements you wanna put out there, um, all into one package in this section. Does anybody want to go first? I can jump in quickly. We can keep it going. My only quick thing was, I don't know, and, and Chris isn't here either. Um, but I was gonna offer, if you or Chris wanted to, I'd be happy to talk about like the MTSS or any of those kind of acronym things. My day job, I actually just put together a whole presentation on MTSS and cost. And it was an acronym filled presentation. MTSS and LLTs and IT, I, but anyhow, I'm happy to have a conversation.
Yeah, I would love it. Thank you.
I know our staff is working. I'm happy to jump in there as well. So if you're wondering what that is, I was gonna offer that as a update from me. Um, I've also been attending and will be this Friday, another round of the, well, there's a superintendent's council meeting coming up, but then there's the other subcommittee of the Roundtable Agreement. Folks who are working on the updated Roundtable Agreement. And so continuing to make, uh, progress in that realm. Uh, they're, they're looking at having kind of an interim agreement in place for next year with, and with a kind of a full-blown revision for, uh, to continue to work on it. But they're, um, I, I've continued to be impressed with all of the, the parent guardian organizations on campuses. You were there?
Yeah, I went to that first one a couple of weeks ago. It is, I mean, as I'm learning it all, it's so complicated. There's no, there's no, we're the easy answers.
Yeah.
Um, it's fascinating.
You are not, you're not sitting in the seat for the easy answers.
No, it's fascinating, just to, you know, the, the different perspectives and the, the history and the volunteerism.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We're volunteering. The, the PTOs and PTA's are volunteering. And so the, the, the turnover and the, the history, you don't always have it. It's, it's just, the whole thing is fascinating, really. So my committee update is this whole process has been fantastic. So thank you for having me.
Oh, yeah.
Who, you know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It's, it's awesome. A lot of us.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a good, you jumped in the deep end on that one. Like literally midstream in that whole process for, uh, for negotiating. But I, I was also, you know, I also resonate how the equity lens just shows up in a lot. I mean, it shows up in that conversation and showing up in the classrooms. And it's been really wonderful to see that and to see them embracing it and wanting to embed it in their agreement document in a way that wasn't there in the original agreement document. So to continue to.
It's tough.
Yeah.
But how do you have that conversation with all the parents?
And they're putting it into practice. So it's not just like, oh, let's talk about it. But then what does that mean for how we spend money in, and, um, fundraise?
Or raise money, yeah.
Raise money, yeah.
Yeah, I've been also really impressed with the group and not knowing where it would go this year when, um, I led the first conversation of the school year about, because we knew that the Roundtable Agreement needed to be revised. But given that equity is a priority of this district, we needed to see that embedded, um, as well in all the work, um, that is done at the site level. So, and thank you so much, Shelley, for taking a really active role in that subcommittee, leading and facilitating. And I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so Shelley did all of it. So thank you. Really appreciate it. Yeah, so more than just the board seat.
Yeah, it's moving forward on this.
Uh, if you wanna spend more time, the, uh, the Brookside Librarian is out with knee surgery. I think she was, she was part-time anyway. And so I had a chance to read to the, uh, third graders yesterday.
Excellent.
So if anybody's looking for more time to spend in the schools, Brookside needs, uh, parent volunteers. Both to help resell books and read to our children. It was fantastic.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
Perfect update topic.
Great community.
Excellent.
Together.
Absolutely. Any other?
Yes, um, so I, uh, got to attend the D-LAC meeting, March fifteenth with Eric, so that was great. Uh, we got, um, update on the LPAC process, um, which is the English Language Assessment that is given to kids who have English as a second language. Um, it assesses like four basic areas, listening, speaking, reading, and writing English. Um, the assessments are done by grade level every year. And it's kind of just to figure out where they are on the scale and if they can move up and out of EL status. Um, so i- it's kind of an interesting process. It takes a lot of time and effort. So, you know, those kids are being assessed and it takes a long time to go through all of those steps with every single child. And there's a number of them. So, um, just thank you to the staff who's doing that because they're at all the different schools. Um, they're talking to lots of kids. Um, and it's a lot of juggling of schedules, so that's appreciated. Um, we also, there is also, um, looking for input on the racial equity board policy that has been passed around, that's kind of being pulled together. So, um, we held a listening session for that. I attended, I didn't get to attend the YES board meeting. Um, I had something come up. Um, but I have lots of updates and then Marcy can hopefully fill in on anything I missed at the actual meeting. Um, they had great turnout for the Perry's Benefit that they had recently. Um, so thank you to Victoria George and her band who played and then helped donate the money to that. So that and Perry's, they kind of helped.
And Essence.
And Essence, yes. So yes, thank you.
Which I just read about in a local magazine. And there was a whole feature on her supporting another musician from originally Santa Cruz who ended up passing away, losing his life. But she helped to create his lifelong dream of becoming a performer. And she was able to put her voice into what he, she was becoming his vocal coach. And then he developed ALS and was unable to continue. But he had a lifelong dream and he was making huge strides before he lost his voice and, um, became not able to perform. And, um, so his album was put together through her. I'm probably not saying it as well as it was written, but it's, um, it was amazing. So I heard through the YES meeting at Essence, but I didn't know and she's one of our parents.
And she sang, she sang a song from him during that.
Oh, she did?
Just before Victoria George, she was kind of the performer before Victoria. So it was a really, really, uh, really good intro to it and she explained it really well. It was really moving.
So I, did I say it kind of?
Much better than I said she did.
So, uh, for YES, so thank you to those, the, both of those groups. That's amazing. And they raised, I think, thirty-one hundred dollars for YES with that event. Um, the next thing coming up for YES is the Battle of the Bands, which is on April twenty-second, seventy-five dollars a ticket. Um, but it sold out the last few years that they've had it. So they were kind of like, hey, if you wanna get on board, they're, they've got a bus. A ticket will buy you a, a bus ride there and back since there's not parking at the venue. Um, and then attendance. I think there's five different bands that they've selected. And I heard, I heard them when they were going through the selection process, there were like seven various bands. And so, um, they picked some good ones. Um, and then I guess the day of the Battle of Bands, Sonus and Fairfax is holding a fundraiser for us as well. So they're donating part of the, um, their income for people who want to go get styled. Because I guess apparently the owner there, Jerry, is very good at styling people for events and concerts and things. And so he's like, come in, get styled, go to the event. And part of the proceeds are going to YES. And then, uh, YES Foundation is about to bring their, bring their spring participation campaign out. Um, so there'll be like a sign waving campaign in all the different campuses and some new signage to kind of bring awareness to the fact that, hey, we're looking for participation. And, um, so I think I saw Daniel's name on that signup. I don't know if your wife signed you up for that?
By the way.
But I'll see you at Brookside, uh, when you sign. Um, and then as far as not word stuff, I got to go to the Wade Thomas Open House last week, which I actually ran into Julia. But I got such a warm welcome there and it was so lovely to see all the different classrooms and just how it's different between the different schools that I've been to. And so it was just really neat. Everybody was really friendly. I talked to a lot of teachers and the kids. And it was kind of fun to see what they've all got going on, all the classrooms and, um, and then I also went to the White Hill Middle School Open House, partially because I have a kid there, but also to go say hi to teachers that I know from the past and just to go take a look at the seventh and eighth grade classrooms and see what's going on in there. I went and visited the history teachers who we got to see a couple of weeks or months ago, I guess a couple of months now. Um, so that was neat. And I went to the White Hill Play this weekend twice. And I watched the other cast, because there's two casts, and I watched the other cast online. So, um, I was really impressed because I was volunteering. So the, the times when you volunteer versus when they actually bring it on stage, it's such a drastic improvement. You're kind of always wondering how they're gonna pull off. And those kids were just fantastic. So I was so proud of them. They just did a lovely job, so.
Are those recorded? Like, do they, are they on like YouTube where you can go look at them afterwards?
I don't think they're public, so I don't know if they're.
They were live streamed.
They were live streamed.
Yeah.
So is that, there's no recording of that?
I don't know. It was pri, the live stream, the video went private after the day of. So I don't know if there's like a licensing issue because it's, it's made production, I believe. So there's probably some sort of limitation there.
Okay.
Anyways.
So. Cool.
Yeah.
Alright. Let me.
No, I, I would say that, um, my child is going to Washington DC and New York on Friday with eighty other White Hill students and some of those teachers that are here that are actually signing up to take eighty eighth graders to Washington DC on multiple flights. And I'm in awe of the challenge. I mean, it's challenging for me to just take my two daughters to dinner and back without craziness, I can imagine. Uh, so I'm really, I'm really, uh, I'm really excited for them to do that. And I'm really waiting to hear how that turns out.
Alright, um, then we can keep moving on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for March eighth. Uh, was there any Hawkeye detail edits that need to be made to those?
I did not sign to any.
No, no, I was looking over there. Rachel, you've been our, our, uh, detail comer on those. Much appreciated, by the way. Alright, second entertained a motion?
I moved we approve regular board meeting minutes for March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
I second it.
Yes, got in. Alright, Rachel?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Alright, on to the March twenty-eighth minutes. Any, um, any issues with those minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I.
I moved that we, I moved that we, that's, you weren't here.
I wasn't here. I was gonna say, that was the one I wasn't here on, so.
So I moved that we, wait, do we have previous here who were there? Okay, Ryan was here. Okay.
Everyone, I was the only one that was absent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I moved that we approved the special meeting minutes for March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
I second it.
So we've got a motion and a second. Rachel?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
I abstain, Shelley abstains. And Ryan?
Aye.
Alright, three I's and one F's. Thank you. Um, great. Alright, on to superintendent and cabinet report.
Alright, Director of Student Services, do you have any updates this evening?
No updates tonight.
Thank you. And Chris Curson?
I just have the one, I, it's to reiterate what you had mentioned earlier, Marcy, that we have a, a seven eleven committee meeting on four seventeen. It's a public input session and it's to, uh, hear, um, public input related to the Deer Park site. It's at six PM at Wade Thomas School. Come on.
Great, thank you. Alright, thank you. And I just wanna say it is, um, open house season, um, so looking forward. Have them to White Hills and, um, Wade Thomases. I didn't see you there last week. And then, um, we have Hidden Valleys tomorrow night. And then a little later, we have Brookside's coming up and then Manners will be in May. Um, so looking forward to getting to all of them and seeing the amazing accomplishments of all of the students and their teachers. It's been, uh, just love getting out to those and seeing those. And then, um, I did get to serve on a Dominican University, um, panel. And so there were three, um, folks from HR around the county who, um, were panelists. And we got to meet with all of the upcoming graduates who could attend. So the majority of the graduates, interestingly enough, are special education mild moderates. So there, um, were approximately eight folks who were in attendance that day. And, um, and it was really glad, great to interact with them and to have, answer their questions so that they can put their best foot forward in an application and selection process for wherever they, um, are to apply. And we hope that they will apply here because we do have, um, a third through fifth grade special day class position that's open now. Um, and so, or it's open for next school year. And so, um, looking forward to seeing that filled. And then I think there, when they didn't have speech, they did have a social worker, someone who's coming out for social work as well. So looking forward to, maybe we will see those people on the consent agenda in the future for personal action. So that was a lot of fun. I've been doing that for probably five or six years now. And it's, um, always wonderful to be there. Um, and then we also had our Manner Superintendent Cabinet Chat, so that was since our last meeting. And we had probably seven family, parents, guardians, um, represented there. And then you already spoke about Roundtable Subcommittee, this Friday Superintendent's Council. We will be focused on, um, LCAP. So Julia will be going over the changes to the LCAP and getting in, but getting unfamiliar with, um, what's gonna be different. And with that, we'll be getting the real input from them at a future Supes Council meeting. But starting to get that input process and connecting with our, our parents and guardians. And then the other one, as was mentioned earlier, is our parent, um, sorry, our, um, draft board policy on equity. And so, um, as was mentioned with the D-LAC, is giving an opportunity for our parent guardian groups to be able to take a look at the draft policy and to be able to give us input. So what we're looking for is not wordsmithing per se, but do you see yourself or how do you see yourself reflected in the, um, draft policy? And then also what do you see are the implications, um, for our schools with having it? So then we will take it back with this input to our Parent Guardian Equity Task Force at our April meeting. And then our subcommittee is, consists of Shelley Hamilton, Chris Lambleskopf, so two trustees, um, who, um, Chris, when she started out, she wasn't a trustee. She was a representative from our Parent Guardian Equity Task Force. Ramona Little Taylor, who's a Brookside parent, and Julia Walcott and myself. And so we, um, work together. And so we worked together to craft the draft board policy and looked at a lot of different samples. So we took a look at the Gamet sample. We utilized the Tamalpais Union High School District approved board policy. And we incorporated our racial equity mission statement. And we also did some Google searching.
And the action.
Oh, and our racial equity action plan that we have in place and did some Googling to see what else might there be out there. And then one of the last elements that we'll do is Julia and I, once we have the policy finalized, we will take a look at linking in or referencing all of, every single one of our board policies, administrative regulations that could be seen as reflective in our board policy on equity. So our goal is to finish all of our work so that we can come back here at our May thirty-first meeting to present it to you all. And then if it's not ready for adoption at that point, then at our June fourteenth, which is our last board meeting of the year.
Did I get that board meeting, June fourteenth? Doesn't need to go through two? Is it like a hearing thing where you have to?
It doesn't have to.
Okay.
So, but oftentimes with how we set up all of our board policies for board consideration approval is in the event that there is further discussion that wants to be had by the trustees. But if there aren't any, it's all really clear, set forward and you all just feel like you can, you don't have to bring it back for a second reading. So we'll see how it goes at our meeting on May thirty-first and to determine whether or not we'll need to bring it back or if you'll be able to make approval of it that evening. So with that, I think I will rest. And Julia, curriculum instruction and anything else with?
Only to say that I too am really enjoying the open house circuit and just what a, what an honor it is to step into every classroom in the district over the course of a month or so. It's, it's really beautiful to see all of the work. So feel very privileged.
Thanks for all those updates.
You've been really helpful.
So we are then going to need to recess into the continuation of our closed session, which will move to the end of the meeting. So this will, we will recess into that closed session. We'll have our closed session, then we'll come back and, because there's anything to report out into open session before we close the meeting.
So with that, we will stop the live stream. And then when we come out of the closed session, Chris will take the place of Jorge to just begin the audio recording of what we report out and finish up and be able to adjourn this regular meeting for four, five, two thousand twenty-three.
Great. All right, so we'll go ahead and end and recess into that closed session. All right, we are coming back into open session. It is ten fifty PM on Wednesday, the fifth. Reporting out for our closed session, the only item that we have, the only action that we have to report out on for our closed session was that we approved the staff recommended resolution for item B four. We approved the staff recommended resolution on the anticipated litigation for the special education program disputes, of which there were two. And that was with student SSID nine one six eight zero one three nine six seven and SSID number seven seven four six eight five nine one one three. So the staff recommended resolution was approved on that. We also, during closed session, had a motion to extend past ten thirty, which we did just slightly. And with that, we are going to skip over this evening, given the timeframe, future board topics and the meeting debrief. And I will therefore adjourn our meeting at ten fifty-two.